Hi there.
Okay, welcome to the City of Taft Planning Commission's special meeting agenda. Special meeting agenda, Wednesday, May eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, City Hall Council Chamber. City of Taft Planning Commission meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at HTTPS colon forward slash foreign slash WWW dot YouTube dot com forward slash user forward slash City of Taft. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the Dropbox in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the City Clerk at the City Clerk at CityofTaft.org. They may be made by phone to the City Clerk's office at six six one seven six three one two two two. Public comments not made in person will be accepted up until one hour before the meeting, and any comments received will be read into the record. Okay, so we're going to start with our pledge of allegiance, and Kathy, can I read it?
The what?
Pledge of allegiance.
Okay, I thought you were going to ask me to do an invitation.
Oh, well, you know, maybe we can do that if we don't have our, yeah, why don't we do that? You can go ahead and do the invitation, and I'll do the salute.
Okay.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here we go.
Father, we thank you for giving us wisdom as we come together to make decisions and plans for the City of Taft. We thank you for your blessing on this city and on this meeting, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen, thank you.
Okay. Uh, we have our roll call, please.
Chairman Livingston.
Here.
Vice Chairman Schertz.
Here.
Commissioner Dowden.
Here.
Commissioner Dowden.
Here.
Commissioner Orrin.
Okay, and I understand Mr. Orrin is delayed, but will be here.
Hopefully be here in five, ten minutes.
Okay, so, uh, we'll address that when it comes. Normally, we do decisions for requests for public comment, but there are no requests, so I'm going to skip item one, uh, the reading of item one at least, and we're going to go to the minutes. So do I have a motion for approval?
Motion, motion, sir. Wait, I can't, I wasn't here. Or was I?
Yeah, you listed.
I was here, yeah, I made it, yeah.
You're missing Orrin.
I'll say it.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Orrin's not here, Commissioner Dowden?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Schertz, please.
Yes.
And Chairman Lee.
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to item three on the agenda, which is continuing our study session, City of Taft Housing Element Update for twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and thirty-one. Uh, our planning director is going to be presenting a progress report on it. It looks like there's been some significant progress.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Livingston. As we've been doing since last year, I've been giving you, uh, some periodic updates on the progress of the update of the housing element. Uh, we've completed all of the outreach of stakeholder interviews, workshops, meeting with the oil tech students. And in the middle of all of that, our consultant team has been editing the document I've been presenting to you all of last year with further revisions with the strike through and underlying document you see in your staff report. Uh, keep in mind, as you see, it ends on page one hundred and sixty, but the, not to talk about quantity of pages, but it's a, right now, a two hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty page document, so there's some sections we won't be going over today that will be in future drafts and hopefully out for public review shortly, but we'll go over what we have today. Um, so as I was starting to mention, this is going to be more of a formal draft number one um, of the housing element update. Um, you have revisions and edits made it to all sections, and I'll go over which sections we're going to be looking at. Um, the draft element is not a final draft by any reason, and if you have been skimming through it, you'll notice there are other city names and maybe even some other year ranges. That's because our consultant team and pretty much every consultant team or even cities that are doing these efforts have been pulling from best practices in other cities. So you might see another city's table that's showing this or that. Um, so that's why that's there, it'll all say Taft in the end, but we're, we're, we're learning from everybody else's angst in going through this process in the past two years, so. Um, and then there, of course, new information and data may be added or revised at any section prior to the public draft. When we get to that first, or that final, formal, public draft, everything will be up to date. So the sections, um, we're going through, um, is one through eight. So introduction, regional housing need allocation plan, review and revision of previous element. It's all the same categories or, uh, titles as we had before. Strike through on the sites inventory and analysis. If you look, it's a single blank page for section seven. That's because they are working on it more, and I'll have a little explanation why you don't have a full, um, section there, and part of that's when I showed you some of the maps that the consultant team's going over. It's because of that affirmatively furthering fair housing, matching up with that long list of properties that I assembled of what's vacant and available. Such and such density, it could be single family, multifamily. The state's requiring this extra layering, which is sort of subtracting some of the properties off of that list, only because it's, okay, you have this list, but put it into income categories of what could be an affordable housing project, what could be a moderate market housing project or, um, above moderate, so we'll get into that. But these are the sections we're going through today, and as I mentioned, it's not every section. Nine through twelve is not in the draft you have before you. So quickly, I'll go through, uh, sections one, two, and three. The introduction, regional needs housing allocation, review and revision of the previous element. Introduction, it's just been updated with, uh, new information and data. And section one point four, um, just outlines what's going to be in the document, and the consultant team is going to add a brief summary paragraph of introductions going to talk about this, and all the subsequent sections are going to talk about this or that. So it's just an introduction, but, um, it's almost there and being complete. Section two is the regional housing need allocation plan. Um, a, a, almost all of it's been revised in that they, uh, took out the discussion about quantitative, qualitative, existing and projected needs, and just made that section about the, um, regional housing need allocation number, that five hundred and four units. It's a one to two pager section just talking about that. Um, section three, um, there's a, uh, a brief insert at section three point one D, which is some required language that we're seeing in other elements that have been adopted the past couple of years by the state's housing and community development. And then there's some brief additions and revisions in the subsections you see listed here, three two one, three two two, and three two three. They're minor, not heavy on the content, but those are some changes you see on the document you have. Now, the first, uh, main one that has a lot of revisions involved is section four, or community outreach and engagement.
You got one, yes, sir?
Um, so in section four, uh, as you recall before, we hadn't done our outreach just yet, or we were going through, uh, the middle of it through March and April. Um, section four point one outlines the outreach and engagement methods. And then section four point two is a real brief summary of the outreach and engagement efforts. In your document, I believe it says somewhere around a hundred and eighty some odd, uh, survey responses. That was actually a week or two ago, when everything finished and closed on April thirtieth. We have over two hundred and thirty responses to the survey, and it looks like there aren't any, uh, nefarious responses that sometimes, uh, leak into open survey, mockage surveys. So it looks like all two hundred and thirty are going to be, uh, pretty legit of residents of the Taft area. Uh, but it goes over the things we did in posting on our city website, sharing things on Facebook and our social media, the public meetings we've been having, the stakeholder interviews we've been having, the two workshops, and then, as I mentioned, we met with the oil tech students a couple of weeks ago. And then four point three is going to be the end detail of what came out of that. Summaries of what the students told us, what the stakeholders told us, actually kind of calling out who was in attendance and all that kind of thing. So you'll see four expand more. We already have some summaries, but we're trying to get it out of memo bullet point form of what everybody said, or they wrote on post-it notes, and we're going to get it into a cleaner narrative, easier to read, um, kind of format. So four is almost there, um, and being completed. Uh, section five is the, uh, housing needs assessment. Uh, we've updated the introduction portion of that with some, uh, uh, listing the data sources we have from the census and HUD. Um, uh, there were some revisions to the population growth trends, age composition, race and ethnicity, and other tables. Um, uh, the employment characteristics, uh, I have some notes or highlights to mention here, but not in every portion of every section, but one thing in the employment characteristics, number one employer in town is education. I think it's eight hu, over eight hundred people are, um, employed by Taft City, Taft Union, or Taft College. Um, household characteristics, this is a, don't want to use the word phenomenon, but, uh, the low persons per household average statewide. Um, the state just revealed their population statistics that I've shared with you guys over the years. I'll save that for my planning director's report, but, um, the one thing is we're down to two point six people per household, which is, which is really low. It's always been over three, and actually, this is pretty consistent with a nationwide number. And we're not going to go in depth into that, but it's some combination of, um, you do have the boomer population that are empty nesters, so there's two, maybe widowed, one, maybe divorced, whatever the situation might be. Then even, and then younger persons as well are not marrying as early, or if they are a couple, they're a couple longer, so they don't have three people in their household or four until later. So things are kind of, it looks like things are going down, but they're definitely coming back up um, as far as, uh, uh, population is concerned in California, and I'll go over that in the director's report. The other side of the household, uh, characteristics, um, we were kind of flat in the median, uh, income in Taft between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty, but that's also a point in time in the last recession and a point in time in COVID. Um, so in two thousand and twenty-two or two thousand and three, there is a extra column in the report where we're now up, uh, pretty well, though slightly below Kern County as a whole or Bakersfield as a whole, so. So low persons per household, but income is up. The housing stock, our housing is aging, um, housing prices and costs are up. There's a, um, I think a line graph in there that shows how it dipped a bit in fifteen. I think that was the oil price dip that matched all that. Um, but current rental and sales price listings are in the tables there as well. They're more up to date. The consultant team dug into all that, as well as utility costs, looking at vacancy, um, overpayment of housing costs and overcrowding. Basically, your rent and or mortgage, if you're paying over thirty percent, the tables and graphs are showing, um, at every income level, whether you're low income or above moderate, there's some portion of our community and every community that's overpaying that thirty percent of their income. And then there's a whole discussion about special needs housing. I think we've gone over this a number of times, the different groups of people or housing types that we look at. So with seniors, I noticed that our senior population has doubled in the ten years from the two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty census. It's a combination of factors, good health, you know, folks that weren't seniors before are now in that senior category, and the seniors that were before are still with us, so.
You're going to lose a good job.
All right.
Yeah, so, uh, and then we also looked at, excuse me, disabled persons, uh, female headed households, large families, uh, so the large families has actually, uh, been about cut in half. I think there was about three hundred plus large families, now it's down to one thirty, one forty, and there's a table for that. Um, and then we discussed some of the other, um, housing options that communities need, transitional, supportive, emergency. We'll be getting into, uh, farm worker housing. We're probably going to update our, not probably, we will be updating our code to include farm worker housing as a, uh, allowed use, because we do have a little bit of ag zone property on the east side of town, so we'll see if that turns into anything, even though we don't have farmland in town. Um, and then we also look at the, uh, low income households.
Mark?
Yes.
Just a quick question. Um, figure four, five one, City of Taft zoning map. Are we going to do that a little, uh, with a blowout or something? Because we've got such a large section of land, um, east of the city. It's on page thirty-four. Um, you, you can't hardly read the coloring.
The other part is the formatting, uh, isn't in place. That will definitely be a landscaping orientation rotate for that and for the downtown specific plan, um, land uses, uh, just so it's legible, because the, the amount of districts in the downtown, if it's overlaid on the zoning map, you won't be able to tell anything. So, uh, right now, this is definitely a draft where nothing's being, uh, accepted formatting wise. All the changes are still in place, um, and, uh, the next draft you'll see, you'll see a lot of that. Uh, formatted properly, little mistakes here and there are going to be revised and all that.
Okay.
Um, this is definitely the, the slam right through, get the data in, get the updated information, all that into this, uh, document. Um, six and seven are, again, other, uh, sections that either we're not presenting or has a lot of work, uh, left to go on it. Section six is a brief, uh, section where it's just a discussion about population growth forecasts. We get that directly from Kern Cog. That's their job. They do the growth forecast, the employment forecast, the, uh, number of housing unit forecasts, and everything is slowing, it's slowing in, uh, the state as a whole. Um, so that shows in the table that's there, it's a page, uh, it's a two-page, uh, section about the, um, future housing needs, but it's just a forecast section. And then section seven is what I mentioned at the beginning of it. Uh, Commissioner Orrin, I had mentioned how, uh, the section that's usually the big one we look at, which lists all the available properties on the sites inventory. It's a little more complicated this go around, because we're overlaying, um, some of that affirmatively furthering fair housing layers, seeing, uh, uh, where the available property is based on some of those categories of income or whatever it may be. And the list isn't just a generic list anymore, it's more specific where this property is most likely going to be an above moderate housing unit or units that it could produce, or it could be a split of some, uh, market rate, some affordability, things like that. So that's why section seven is blank right now on the draft you have. A more robust section seven is being worked on by our, um, consultant team. And then eight is the big one. I've got three, it's the one thing I'm discussing today, it's got three slides worth on this. So, uh, again, it's an extensive review of all things governmental and non-governmental constraints. Mostly, I think what you have in your draft is all the governmental side. So what it goes over is we look at what do we have in our general plan? What do we have in our zoning ordinance? Uh, policy-wise, action-wise, what are we doing that promotes the development of housing? And then we get into the discussion of the variety of housing types, uh, particularly multifamily rental housing. Again, housing for ag employees, even though we're not a big ag area, we have the farms right next door, and we do know we have a fair amount of, uh, farm workers that do live in the community as a whole, maybe in our city limits, maybe not, but there is opportunity for, uh, farm worker housing, and there's developers that build those, uh, up and down the valley. Uh, some of the other unique, uh, housing options, emergency shelters, low barrier navigation centers, transitional housing, supportive housing. And if you recall, uh, I think in a prior, uh, ordinance update, I think we crossed out the single room occupancy, because it seemed like it wasn't as much a thing today, but the state's going back and going, no, it should be an option. Basically, uh, hotel living type of, uh, single room occupancy type housing, uh, is still a thing we need to list as a use somewhere in our residential zones or the multifamily zone, wherever it may be. So that's going to be reintroduced into, um, our housing element and zoning code. Um, we're, uh, discussing also all the other housing types for manufactured mobile homes, ADUs, and then, uh, uh, I put building, it meant boarding or rooming houses. Again, kind of a, uh, older traditional way of, uh, housing in a somewhat dormitory style, but, um, it's not gone away. I think COVID kind of reintroduced some of those things, particularly where some of the hotels converted into, um, housing for folks, whether they're the homeless that's on the street or the homeless that lost their housing during all that. So they're bringing back all these varieties of the old, uh, housing types that used to be something, but aren't as much today. It's, if it's an option, it should be on our, uh, allowed uses in our residential sections, and we'll be going over all that with a separate ordinance later this year. We'll go through all the in-depth details on how we get this reintroduced and allowed in certain areas in Taft. Um, and speaking of that, um, this section, section eight, goes over all the zoning regulations, more of your standard stuff from development standards, density, parking, lot coverage, height limits, lot size, unit size, floor ratio setbacks, and open space requirements. It's more of, is this a barrier to development? So when a developer comes in, takes all our standards, is there something that's, you know, some weird setback that's on one size, and they can't get to their sweet spot of a hundred and fifty units or whatever it may be, um, they're looking at that. Um, we're going to look back at some objective design standards as well, because the state's really pushing to get a lot of housing developments to be more of a by right and not coming before the five of you. So if we could get our zoning code in order, where somebody takes that opportunity, and a number of times it's in the affordable housing side of things, we need to make sure our standards are in place where if it's not coming before the five of you on the admin staff of side of things, we need to make sure that's all in order, and it doesn't ruffle too many feathers when they utilize these state programs and processes that are kind of circumventing local zoning control. So, uh, there's a lot of good projects out there, though. That's the one good thing, uh, with some of that. So, uh, we're looking into density bonuses, development incentives, and growth management. And then again, similar with the objective design standards, there's a number of, um, state lawed housing bills that have passed since two thousand and eleven that we need to make sure we're in line with, and then also looking at building code, code enforcement, and substandard housing conditions, and then also on and off-site improvements for housing projects. And the last slide for section eight, um, looking at how we process things and how long it takes to process applications, both on the planning side and then the building permit side. How long is it taking for general plan, zoning ordinance, conditional use permits, variances, and other permits? Um, does the little airport approach height overlay for our county airport here? How does that affect particular sites? Um, review and processing timelines, looking at our fees and exactions. And then also, for some reason, uh, residential facilities, group homes, the definition of family is a thing. When I have the more detailed line of all that, we'll, we'll go over it. And then, uh, reasonable accommodations, we've, um, incorporated that into our zoning code where, uh, persons with disabilities needing changes to their home to accommodate whatever their handicap, uh, situation may be, that's in place, but they're, uh, looking that, at that as well. Um, so the next steps, as I mentioned, today was sections one through eight minus seven. Um, the revisions for sections nine through twelve, which gets into a lot of that affirmatively furthering fair housing, and all those layers of, do you have any indicators that there might be some, uh, disadvantage to some, uh, folks over the others or parts of town that aren't, um, developing the housing that we need? Um, and then we also need to complete our SEQA document, which actually should be pretty easy since we're not actually constructing anything. It'll be one of the few times we do just the standard negative declaration. It's still going to be a lengthy document that says we're processing a housing element, we're not approving any kind of development with this, uh, general plan amendment approval that we're looking to do, uh, but we do need to process all this in the next couple of months to get it before you for a final review and vote. Um, I'm thinking next meeting in June, we'll probably have a more complete document for you, and hopefully we're in like week one of the SEQA review, because that needs its own thirty-day process. And then, uh, our meeting needs to be after that thirty-day process, and then after you goes the city council. So it looks like we're going into June, July, uh, but it, and don't cringe too much, we still have to send it to the state, and they have ninety days to review and send it back, so. Uh, we'll have some revisions to make later this year, but the good part is we, we're at the end of the line of the entire state, so we're learning everything from every other city out there that's, uh, been processing. Our consultant team, they've been working on however many dozen elements. They're learning from all their, um, folks as well, and everybody's been replicating.
What works.
Maybe not plagiarizing, yeah, but best practices.
Best practices, yeah.
It's not copying, it's not plagiarizing, it's best practices, and what the state's looking for in a somewhat, somewhat homogeneous, everybody comply with this stuff, have it in your, your, uh, document, but then what's unique about your area when you get into the actual analysis? So we're getting all the kind of structural stuff in place with all this. A lot of that analysis will be coming up in the next, uh, draft you'll see, and hopefully we're at the public review, or the five of you and the general public as a whole having an opportunity to go through the document, ask questions of me that you have, and we'll get whatever we need to get revised. Otherwise, we'll go straight to approval with you guys, and it's more about the housing programs that, um, section eight with all that stuff, if you notice, there's a bunch of, oh, it results in program X and it has a yellow highlight on it. It's because we know these are, they have their spreadsheet ready to go with all the new housing programs we're going to have, but a lot of it's going to be, uh, going back and doing a lot of the zoning code revision. So with, uh, Commissioner Orrin and, uh, Chairman Livingston, if you recall, back in two thousand and fifteen, we had a number of things to do. We fixed some of the densities and fixed some of the setbacks and things like that, um, after we completed that process in two thousand and fifteen. So we're going to have another go around of this later this year into two thousand and twenty-five, probably even to twenty-six, depending on how many different revisions and revisions and changes we need to make to get consistent with state law when it comes to, uh, housing. So, uh, I'll leave that, leave it at that. This is a bit of a briefer update, because it's definitely more about structure and a lot of editing that's been going on, but, uh, I'm available for any questions you may have, and it doesn't have to be limited to this, if you have any questions about other sections you've read in the past and where we are with that.
Commissioner Dowden?
I got a few.
Sure.
Uh, did the oil tech kids have anything, uh, new that kind of caught your eye that was outside the box?
Uh, I wouldn't say outside the box, but it was welcoming to hear that, um, they mentioned how once they turn eighteen and graduate, depending on where they go to school or their choice for school would be if they could move out of the house, and the fact that we don't really have sufficient rental apartments, units, ADUs, whatever it may be, to be able to rent out when they turn, you know, July first or June first, whenever graduation is. You know, that, those options aren't as plen- You know, that those options aren't as plentiful here. So the option is, okay, look to Bakersfield, join a friend that's maybe going to the same school or something. They go find something in Bakersfield. So getting the developers, uh, here to either get some of the upstairs revamped into apartments or get some new development, maybe along the trail, whatever the properties we have that allow for that, they would like to stay. They would like a robust downtown that's active and they could hang out there with their friends and all that. But we just don't quite have the, the, uh, volume of housing that is needed for them to have that option when they graduate.
Yep.
So it was like the main one and, but they knew where everything was, uh, geography wise. They, they threw a lot of things out at our consultant team of different places and venues that they would like to hang out once they're on their own in Bakersfield. Of course, our consultant team had no clue what the boulevard was or this place or that place. But it was good and we didn't really even have to solicit a lot of that. The consultant team did their presentation and they said, hey, open floor. And they just fed us information or reinforced, you would think, or you would hope, those that are about to get to college age and go out on their own, they have an idea of what they're wanting to do, where to do it. And, um, the classes, one of the smaller classes they had, I think it was eighteen students, typically they have closer to twenty-five. But, uh, they, well, it was a welcome surprise, I guess you could say, of how responsive they were. We didn't really have to nudge them to get those kind of responses.
I see that a lot. I'm, I'm glad the kids are being interactive and giving input. That's exciting. But I see it a lot in oilfields. The guys come out within six months or a year, they're making decent money. And, you know, who doesn't want to get out on their own? The rental market isn't good here in, for anyone. And we see them move out of town all the time. We lose a lot of good people every year to that, you know?
Yeah, one good thing was, uh, again, we didn't have the full report on, um, uh, the stakeholder interviews that we've had. And we didn't get a lot of the home builders. We did get Colson Construction. They added, you know, what they went through for the homes they have built up until recently. Um, and then seeing what's out there for interest rates and the cost of, uh, uh, materials for construction and all the, the limitations that, uh, you know, hold back everybody who builds and rehabs and all that. Uh, but, uh, just this afternoon, we were able to, um, have a, uh, chat with, uh, one of the top people at Self Help Enterprises. They're one of the main affordable housing builders in the valley. Uh, they probably build a hundred more units a year, if not more. And their stuff's pretty good. If you go to their site, just search Self Help Enterprises, look at their portfolio of recent, uh, developments. I don't think many people would, um, tag their projects as just judging the book by its cover that it was affordable housing. They, uh, they're, they put quality design and newer kind of, kind of like what we have with the TAF. A lot of our corrugated metal, uh, siding, we have that kind of design element on our, uh, transit center kind of thing. Uh, they have one story products, they have three story products. So, uh, it looks pretty good and they liked some of the land they saw here. So hopefully it's the start of something. Give it a year or more until they really fall in love with us. But, um, we have some land here that really piqued their interest. And the way we made it happen is I happened to go to a valley, uh, conference, uh, specific conference in Visalia last week. And the same lady that we spoke to today was doing a presentation on housing element. She was just a moderator. But I had the opportunity to talk to somebody in affordable housing world. And she was, before I even made it back to the office, she had already emailed me about setting up a call that we had earlier today. And she seemed real interested. Her other staff were on board there too. So, um, hopefully something comes of this and not to be repetitive, but probably give it a year or so for the, for them to really, um, like a property here, because they'll do their due diligence and be, you know, diligent about it. And, uh, hopefully that turns into something and then it could, when, once somebody starts developing here, I'm sure the Best Western or Taco Bell kind of started the wave for commercial side of it. We got the Dollar Generals and, uh, grocery outlets. And hopefully the same happens on the housing side of it. When one person comes here, all of a sudden you're on the hot list for, okay, do they have more property for this, that or the other? So fingers crossed on that.
Uh, there's a good empty lot. I don't know if it's in the Will House for, um, the healthcare district. But be a great spot for their, uh, like a senior center there. It's right where the old hospital was stored down.
So the, they do own everything on their property except for those houses you see off of center. And then the property on the south center str- center street, they did purchase that back when Jerry Star was, uh, running everything there. So they do have control of everything this side of, uh, First Street there.
Yeah.
Both sides of Center Street.
I think if they built something, it would fill up. They'd have, they'd have a waiting list.
It's in their grand, uh, uh, master plan of things, but they went with the, the, the facility you see today. But they got to fundraise again for the next project. So it is in their bigger plan. But, um, they started with what we have there. That's hopefully, uh, working out for everybody here locally.
Anyone else have questions?
How much is the state coming after us and how much control can we fight back against some of their mandatory choices?
Well, so far it's not too bad, because, uh, one thing I've made sure to do is that we don't, um, you know, just, uh, one hundred percent write however they're, uh, you know, into the code or into the general plan or into the housing element verbatim how they are. It's how does it fit in Taft?
Right.
And how can we have certain development standards that fit us size wise, development wise? So, uh, the one buffer is going through myself and then when the ordinance changes come before you, question what I'm trying to bring before you that's coming out of this process. I'll get more into the details when the consultant team gets me some of those and make sure I highlight it in our next meeting. But, uh, uh, the one main thing, um, is that they, they've given a lot of the affordable housing developers. They're providing a clear avenue for them to come in, uh, but they don't build big projects as it is.
Right.
So, uh, uh, the group we talked to, they seem like they're, they would be on board with some public outreach meeting with you, chamber, service clubs, things like that. They're not going to just show up, just jam the, the application process through and get out. They're, they're going to be here for the longer term, kind of like if some of you have met the Habitat for Humanity crew. Rebecca Robinson and that crew, they're, they're really good people. They, they, they came to the Chamber event, uh, back in February. They're trying to be in the community more, um, and I think these other groups will as well. So even though the state is doing, um, passing dozens of bills that are trying to help a situation where they're making it, where we have less and less of our own local control.
Right.
I'll definitely be keeping you guys more in the know of anything that ends up not being a process that goes before you. You'll know what's coming through if it needs to stay more administrative. Um, there won't be anything that just sneaks by.
Perfect.
The environmental, like city don't, don't have much to do with it, right? As far as.
No, it's always on us, but in this situation with the consultant team, they have their template. There's template documents for the SEQA, uh, documents. It's called an initial study. It's got, I think it's up to twenty, twenty-one categories now. It used to be like seventeen, eighteen. Um, and it goes through land use, air quality and other things. But on this one, because it's more of a just preparation of a document analyzing the housing that's in town. And especially because we don't have to change a single zone or general plan area. We're able to go through a more simpler process and it's going to be a real minimal portion of their contract expense. Um, other cities that have to do more intensive zone changes and general plan amendments, that would be a little more costly because they're almost having to do a, almost a pre-approval on a, a site. Cause they're doing the general plan and zone change to get it in a so- situation that makes the state happy as far as density or setbacks or how many units can ultimately be built on it. Whereas our downtown specific plan and the general zone districts and other vacant parcels in town are already set up for single family duplex type development or a larger multifamily. Like we saw the examples kind of drawn out on the downtown specific plan. So we're in a good place there. The SEQA won't be too much of a process for us. It's just, it requires that thirty day review. So you always kind of have to plan that out in your overall schedule of how you get this project done. Whereas the other ones, you know, SEQA's a six month process. Whereas it will just be the minimum thirty day review, probably one week for one of their assistant planners to prepare the document. And just make sure it's got everything discussed properly. But it's a, this is one of our basic SEQA processes here.
Do either, uh, Mr. Orin or?
Firm of which you spoke, um, the Visalia meeting where it occurred. What's their minimum development plan? I mean, are they going to come out or they're willing to do like six or eight houses or are they looking for more like fourteen to fifty?
So they do, it looks like they do both single family and multifamily. I didn't look at too much of their single family product, but on the multifamily, it looks like they are on the larger side. Uh, eighty to a hundred and twenty range instead of, uh, like our Heritage Park is sixty. Uh, there's a lot that are in that kind of forty-five to sixty-five unit range, which is still good. We need every, you know, we could get. Uh, but, um, self-help, uh, can do larger. So they could fill up a majority of the, um, property that's on the south side of Supply Row from the Transit Center. Like they would look to go there because the folks that would be needing that rental assistance to live there, you got the bus system right there. Our system picks them up, the regional system, the Bakersfield could pick them up. So that's an ideal spot where they want to be. And it helps them when they go for the tax credits and other grants that help, um, uh, balance their books when they.
How many parcels are there from the, um, Transit Center to Four Street?
Actually, most of those are, uh, single parcels. If, uh, that one's only one, or no, it's two. Um, and then the big one is one lot. A lot of those parcels downtown aren't chopped up or subdivided.
So the four acre, three acre, that type of properties?
They are a larger where they could pretty much just go within the limits of that property.
Are we having any problems with the runoff? I've noticed when they, we were doing, um, in, in South Taft and they redid it, made a big hole right there and part of the property. So obviously no houses there, but that was runoff for the most part for, 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 uh, South Taft. Is there anything that's going to eat up a lot of land like that with us? So we, we have enough storm infrastructure to take care of that?
So when it comes to storm rotter, drainage, all that, we're still a little more in the, what might can be considered an old fashioned way where, um, you keep it in the street and in the gutters.
Right.
There's some catch basins, you, uh, which are those little, uh, open gutter places along Kern Street. Um, but we, most everything is surface load because I think we all know or know somebody that, um, their property unfortunately maybe is sinking in a corner or somewhere. Cause our soils, we didn't know forty, fifty years ago until it's been there for forty, fifty years, that the soil is a little, uh, soft or can have some, uh, liquefaction or compaction issues. So, uh, uh, so when keeping it in the streets and not letting it overly soak into our properties, that's how you avoid those conditions.
Right.
We'll still have some of the required, um, what they call storm water pollution prevention practices. Um, where there is like a, um, a natural swale of some sort or natural grasses or other vegetation do a natural cleaning of the water that comes off a parking lot or comes around the Best Western Hotel or whatever it may be. And then it discharges into the street and then it follows the street down to Sandy Creek to the north.
Right.
So everything dumps into there eventually, but there are some, um, intermediate measures. If you want to see an example of it, um, the newest, uh, Dollar General on Gardner Field Road on the east side of it. Uh, if you notice, there's a drainage, uh, facility that spits out on their side of Gardner Field Road. And that comes from the south side of Kmart.
Right.
And so they have a little, um, retention basin, but it's not a full detention. It eventually dumps into that, um, little tributary that feeds Sandy Creek, um, there as well. And that's typically what a, a pro, um, a new development will have in a lot of cases, but not every case. And there's another one, uh, the fenced in area next to, uh, Family Dollar on Kern Street between them and, uh, um, the, um, the rec district. Uh, there's a little piece there. I think it was open more before, but I think people were hanging out in it. So they fenced it off more to keep people out. But it's to help take some of those storm flows that they would get from the rec. And actually it's Church Street that funnels a lot of the, uh, drainage down Sandy Creek and towards the shopping centers. So our infrastructure is there, but, uh, uh, we rely more on the streets than a subterranean pipe that a lot of cities would do.
Right.
Good job. Um, just a couple of observations. Some people have been concerned, are always concerned about the state sticking its nose in. One of the advantages of, of both the amount of land we have available and the fact that we pretty much follow the guidelines means that we're not an important target. There are cities all over the state who are making themselves targets for the state to, to get involved in Huntington Beach. There's some up in Northern California as well, who are, I think right now, getting the lion's share of the time from housing and community development at the state level. So, um, as long as we continue to, uh, keep within the framework, I don't think we're going to have significant issues there. And as far as the storm water, that one's interesting. There's a state, there's a construction permit that they follow for, during the construction period. But they're also required to create a SWIP, the Storm Water Prevention Plan, which eventually then feeds into a final plan for the, the, so if we have a larger one, this, uh, affordable housing developer will, will have that kind of, uh, development actually usually on site. And given our issues, they'll know that, how we like to have the water, um, dealt with in terms of, um, its effect on compaction, things like that. Of course, we have much stronger engineering requirements now than we did when a lot of the, the homes were built. So that won't be an issue, I don't, I don't think as much as it could be for others. And usually the developer has a, a really good consultant when it comes to dealing with storm water because it's a really expensive mistake if you screw it up. Was it twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars a day or something like that? It's not cheap to make a mistake on a storm water program. So I'm, I'm confident that what we're doing now will, uh, appease the state, if you will. I don't know if there's a better word for it than that. And I appreciate the hard work. I think your consultants have done a great job. Uh, I look forward to the finished product. It does look like we're going to get pretty close to the end of the year before this is fully approved. Are we going to run into issues with any, do we know of any potential changes in code at the state level that might affect this currently running through the, uh, pipeline?
I think what, um, we'll probably, probably will be doing is the programs will be outlined. You know, when we make that initial submit, we'll be doing our initial approval and adoption of it. And I believe we, if, there's nothing stopping us to start implementing some of those and getting some of the, we figure out which ones need to be, uh, revised or changed or adopted now, or in the next six months or before January first of twenty-five. Those will cer- certainly go to the front of the line as far as the schedule of things we need to have in order for the next round of whatever grant monies or, or other processes that the state frowns upon. Like you said, some other jurisdictions tend to, uh, push back a lot to the state and they're, you know, unintentionally intentionally drawing the ire of the state when it comes to stuff like that. Where we're going to adopt all the statewide policies, but we're going to make them our own as well. And whatever we got to do to get done in the short term to make sure we're compliant, because our prior element was compliant. Um, all the, um, housing element reporting, um, that we've been doing every year, every February, we do our process, goes to the council in March. As long as we stay on top of that, even if we're somewhat still in mid-process late this year, those programs that are in place, that's what I'll be utilizing for our reporting in February, even if things take forever to get reviewed and responded to. We'll just use that as our template until they say otherwise. So we're going to stay compliant. We're going to stay on top of all our programs and, uh, implement what we can in the short term and then plan out what we do in long term, whether it's, uh, state compliance or something that will make it more advantageous for like this affordable housing group to come into town.
And then if there's issues that come up, we'll do what we've always done. When we had the lot changes a couple of years ago, we'll make those changes and make an adoption or changes to the, um, element to reflect those changes. So I don't think there's any issues in the long run with the state, at least ones that I would worry about.
And our consultant team's been really efficient in this initial stuff. And I, I would guess to see the same when we go into the revision period with the state, when they send us their comments.
I think they'll also leave you a pretty, pretty fine te- template to, to work with.
Well, that's where, like I said, I apologize for some of the foreign city names and the element that aren't even in our county. But it, it's the best practices that our team has found with other cities that are a little further along than we are. And they've gotten response letters of, you need to look more into this or have more detail on this table or whatever it may be. And that's why you might see some of that in this draft. We just, uh, are pushing forward and replicating what works elsewhere. And then we're adding the detail. the detail of what our numbers and data and narrative are in our housing element.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I have a question.
Good.
Has the state in any way earmarked or alluded to having anything set aside for rural housing, uh, promotion and tax credits or grant money that could come to a small community? I know they're tickled to death with six hundred thousand dollar one-bedroom apartments in LA.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, six hundred thousand dollars, if we put that into our community, we could have a dozen units.
So I don't really have a response for you other than I did over here, cause I don't follow state politics, that the current, um, whatever our Assembly and Senate calls their, um, Chair or House Leader, whatever you call it, the two that are in the House and the Senate, whether it's your political party or not, are from some of the most rural portions of the state as opposed to our urban cities. So hopefully they have some influence and control on that. And I've heard that from the COGS, when I was at the COG meeting last week, that, that's their concern as well. I heard it from Madera and Tulare and all those counties, that transportation dollars for roadways and various things that they're concerned with, but they're very much pushing to work with those two leaders to, uh, make sure that bills do have that eye and focus. But, uh, beyond that, I, I don't know what other influence there is. It's always the pushback whenever a bill doesn't fit our way. And the League of Cities seems a little bit more on the one-size-fit-all, doesn't fit all lately, some of the letters they recommend us to be a part of. So, uh, uh, if anything comes up like that, I'll share it with you and get some more detail on it.
That's encouraging.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, um, unless there's any other questions, we'll move on to item, uh, four, the Planning Director Report.
And I kinda teased this earlier, and I don't have any paperwork for you. I don't wanna create a whole thing on it, but, uh, the State Department of Finance, who handles the local state estimation and demographic projections, uh, says that we did gain in population this year. So I'll have to eat a little bit of crow, cause I was saying the fourth year in a row of losing population was gonna happen, and it didn't. Um, but if you look at the numbers, some of it doesn't match where, cause last year's number ended under thirty-nine million people, but this year's report says we started over with over thirty-nine million people, and now we're at like thirty-nine, one, as far as our gain. But the two positives that did come out of that report that I'll, I'll definitely tout is that our, uh, births over deaths gain was a lot more than the last year and even the last couple of years. It's an over, the over a hundred thousand or a hundred and ten or twenty thousand more births and deaths, and that's how you gain population. And then immigration was up, um, as well. So you have those two factors, but when you add those two together, it's way above what the net overall gain was. So there's still some sort of, you know, leaving the state number that's out there, but we've, um, you know, people stayed healthy and we're having more babies to get our population up overall, but it is still in that half to one percent gain, which isn't a bad thing. You know, it's slow and steady, can still win the race, um, and not have us lose population in the state overall. But there's still, if you do all the math, you'll still see there's still some, uh, outmigration out of the state of California, and that should still be a concern, even though we had a net positive gain for this year. Uh, but I'll keep track of it, see what all the demographers say in the different sessions I attend in and how they say things. The one thing that is the interesting thing is that average persons per household, if anything, that's probably the main housing crisis issue, is that we do have plenty of units, but we're having fewer people per unit. So now that, that's why there's not as many housing units available, is that it's only housing one person or two people, maybe three. Um, people aren't congregating together more, if you will, or having larger families, all that kinda stuff. So, uh, it's a nationwide thing. It's not just us with that two-point-six per household. Nationwide, I think it just delip- dipped below three. So it's not just California. So, so if you wanna get into the whole fund with numbers, look all that stuff up, go to the Department of Finance website. They have all their spreadsheets and their press release. The press release is the easiest one to read of the overall change in population here in the state. Um, you can see that, but it's a good thing, a positive net gain overall.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, um, then item five, City Attorney.
Come on, don't let us down.
What's that?
Don't let us down.
Well, I don't know what would constitute letting you down.
Very little disappoints me.
Uh, thank you, no stick.
Okay. Um, then we're gonna move on to Commissioner's comments. I'll start down at, uh, your end, Mr. Schertz.
I've been on vacation, so I have nothing.
Okay.
Other than a great tan.
Well, there you go.
Thank you.
How it shows.
Uh, just some things coming up over the summer, you know, in Taft. Try to take advantage of anything we got here. Keep your money in Taft if you can and enjoy what we got. You know, it's easy to go other places and do things, but if we got something here, enjoy it, you know, and show up. That's what keeps more things coming. If they, if they're successful, then people will do more things.
Mm-hmm. Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, no, not today.
Mr. Orin?
Yeah, on a personal note, um, uh, you know I've been being treated for, uh, liver cancer, and on Thursday last week, they told me they didn't see no viable cancer cells in my body. So their treatment's pretty awesome, so I'm, I'm very pleased, and I thank the community and you folks for your prayers and good wishes. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm glad to hear that. Um,
Yep.
It starts the clock running to...
Being the same Andre guy I used to be.
Yes, exactly. You know, everybody needs a troublemaker.
Yeah.
Okay, um, some bad news for those. We're gonna move to item seven, the identification of representative of the City Council. Um, last month, I forgot I was working in election, and this month, I haven't forgot. I am working in election again on the, the next City Council's date. So one of you four can volunteer or?
We, Rob, Rob, he's, 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 he won.
Yeah, right.
I don't know if I won or lost, but unless someone else wants to do it, I'm...
I think I'm busy that night.
What?
Nothing.
So i- if you'll do it, I'd appreciate it, Mr. Dowden.
Thank you, John.
And it's pretty easy. You just wait until they call you in. Tell them we're working on the same thing we've been working on for six months. Um, okay, that's excellent. So then, all we need is a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.